And indicates for the record that C W and Tuya are not yet here. Tuya is going to be late. She was caught in a meeting at San Francisco City Hall, so she will be here as soon as she can.
One meeting is not mayor, and then...
You know, work calls. You understand how that works. So, would you all please join me for the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you all. The next meeting on the, the next item on the agenda is our consent calendar. Does anyone wish to pull any items on the consent calendar? Or do we have a motion for approval?
I move approval.
I have a motion in a second for approval of the consent calendar. All in favor, please say aye. Aye, oppose. That carries unanimously. Next item on the agenda is recognitions and presentations. We have none. The first report is Planning Commissioner, and that is a report by Commissioner Frank Gavidia. I will say this is a report that he will be giving. There will be no back and forth, no discussion of this item at this meeting. Frank.
Madam Mayor, good evening. Thank you very, very much for accommodating my request to move up on the agenda. I do have family at the airport. I thank you. Vice Mayor Juan, Councilman Diaz, city staff. I'm reporting the results of the December 10th, 2019 Planning Commission meeting. All four commissioners, Chairman Cloven, Commissioners Altwall, Chippero, and I were present for the meeting. The agenda for the meeting was as follows. Public hearings for the following resolutions. Resolution 0519, a resolution of the Planning Commission determining that the Olivia on Marsh Creek Senior Housing Project qualifies for a categorical exemption under Class 32 Infill Development Projects. Resolution 0619, a resolution approving the Affordable Housing Density Bonus Application, Site Plan Review, and Tree Removal Permit for the Olivia on Marsh Creek Senior Housing Project, and Resolution 0719, One-Year Extension of the Creekside Terrace Development Plan Investing Tentative Map. The meeting began a few minutes after 7:00 PM and lasted until approximately 12:35 AM Wednesday, December 11th. After public comments, questions of staff and discussion, the Planning Commission voted with the following results for each resolution. Resolution 0519 was passed, three votes in the affirmative, one vote opposing. Resolution 0619 did not pass with two affirmative, two opposing. It was indicated early during the meeting that a tie vote would result in the resolution not passing. Resolution 0719 was continued to the next Planning Commission meeting after a public speaker brought to light an issue with the project. At this time, I would like to thank staff, and they're not here unfortunately, in particular Interim Director, Inter community Development Director Waltering and Assistant Planner Milan Sikala for all their hard work. I spoke to Planner Sikala on Wednesday before Thanksgiving Day, only to learn he would be working over the holiday to make sure we would have all the materials for the meeting. I commended him and said that time should be spent with his family instead of working, to which he replied, "Clayton is worth it." I agreed with him, and I appreciate his dedication. I also would like to thank Chairman Cloven for running such an orderly set of meetings, not just the last one, but the prior one. As emotional as these resolutions were to the public, there were no outbursts, and people were polite to one another even when they disagreed. Chairman Cloven also repeatedly told the public, "We want to hear from you. We value your input." I want to thank my fellow Commissioners Altwall and Chippero for the long hours they put into preparing for this meeting and their valuable insights during the meeting. We are a very collegial group. At the end of the evening, each one of us shook hands, embraced, and lamented that we could not go out together to get a much-needed drink because of the rules. Lastly, if I may make an inquiry to our city attorney to confirm if this matter is now out of the hands of the Planning Commission. There was some question as to whether this matter could return, and I think the four of us would like to know, you know, what, what, what the outcome is there. That is my report. Thank you.
Thank you, Frank. Would the city attorney like to answer that question? I think members of the public would like to know that, too.
Sure, I will give you a brief response.
Yes, it is. Are you on?
Yep. I think I'm on now. I'll give a brief response. Yes, the Planning Commission's action on this matter is finished, so it will not come back before the Planning Commission.
Thank you. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Thanks, Frank.
I have one comment that I would like to have you extend to the chairman who did have, by the way, I could never get the streaming to work, and I'm talking with the assistant to the city manager, bouncing back through Channel 1, Channel 2, we have a problem with our streaming system. But anyway, I understand that the general public did, in fact, get to speak earlier than three hours into the meeting, and I want to compliment you and the Planning Commissions for doing that. We have to hear from the public. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Frank. Very good.
Thank you.
Go get your people at the airport.
Thank you, Mayor. Very much.
Drive safely. Thank you. All right. We had no Trails and Landscaping committee meeting, and a, our city manager is not here this evening, and I will explain why. We had looked very much forward to introducing our new city manager, Ikani Tomapeo, to you this evening. However, his mother passed away late last night. We will be adjourning tonight's meeting in her honor. So, and we will hear from a couple folks who know Ikani well during public comment. But he very much wanted to be here, and I insisted he spend this time with his family, as he should. He's the youngest of six children, and it's a very, very large family, and they have a lot going on over the next week before the services are held next Monday. So, he is with his family where he should be. So, is there any other report from staff?
Yes, thank you, Mayor. I just want to let the public know and remind the council that the city offices will be closed to the public on December 24th, December 25th, and on January 1st for the holidays. We will have staff on the other days, from the 23rd through the 3rd, but we'll be very lightly staffed, so we appreciate any patience they have if the phones don't get answered right away, or if they need to wait for assistance at the counter. Usually, it's a light time of the year for the public to come in as well, but there will be people there, but it'll be just very lightly staffed. So, thank you very much. That's all I have.
And thanks to the skeleton crew who's going to hang in there for, for the days that we are open during that two weeks. It is usually a very light agenda for everybody at that time. Next, we'll go to city council reports. I will indicate that Councilmember Catalano has joined us. And Jim, would you start with the reports, please?
Have a couple of items. First of all, on Saturday, the 7th, was a rather busy day for myself. It started off in the morning. We have a brand-new business in downtown Clayton at the Clayton Station called The Curry Bowl, and myself and the mayor from Concord were there to grand-open the business, and I want to tell you, within a few minutes of opening, the place was packed. And so, it looks like it's going to be, it started off to be very successful. The Curry Bowl, right in Clayton Station, right down the road there from both the, if you know where the, they have a, a cleaning establishment called Dry Clean USA, they also own The Curry Bowl, so it's right up the aisle from them. Later that day, I came back and we had a modified Christmas tree lighting event, which ultimately ended up at the church headquarters, right on Main Street, because the unfortunate thing was, with rain, the park was just flooded and very slippery. Then later that evening, the Clayton Business and Community Association hosted their annual volunteer appreciation event that I attended. On Saturday, the 14th, I attended and represented the city at a event that's now going to be an annual, one called Rees Across America, and had the honor of placing Reese on the graves of several deceased veterans. Very moving event. On Sunday, the 15th, I was invited by the mayor of Concord to join in for the Clayton Valley Charter High School Football Team Rally. In case you didn't know it, they won the CIF Championship, and they had a huge event at Toto Santos Park. Started off first with the wonderful Clayton Valley Charter High School Jazz Ensemble, which, if you've not listened to them, they, you'll know why they were invited to perform at, at Carnegie Hall. They are exceptional. So, congratulations to the Clayton Valley Charter High School Football Team for their state championship. Go Uglies.
Thanks, Jim. And Jeff?
Okay. I just have a couple items. I, I, unlike my fellow Councilmember Diaz, I did try to view the streaming of the latest Planning Commission meeting. I, I had concerns over the last meeting and the streaming accessibility, and I, I had a pretty positive experience this go-around. I did rotate between Feed 1 and Feed 2, so I was able to, to view at least detail, and I was at basketball practice for the first part. And at the invitation of former Sergeant England, as well as Councilmember Diaz, I attended the Contra Costa Sheriff's Posse Dinner, Christmas Dinner, and that was, that was great, so I wanted to thank you for that. It was a great way to recognize some of the, the men and women that, for, in our community. That was a pretty fun experience. I had, I received a few questions from community members about the process around the Planning Commission Appeal, Appeal process that I'll probably raise at a later time. And that was about it.
Okay. Thank you. Tuya?
So, I had the pleasure of emceeing the tree lighting ceremony.
Is your mic on?
Probably not. There we go. Better. Okay. So, I had the pleasure of emceeing the tree lighting ceremony, which, as Councilmember Diaz indicated, was actually held inside, and we didn't actually light the tree, but it was a very nice event, and, and thank you to not only CPCA who put on that event, but also to Clayton Community Church for hosting everybody very spontaneously inside. So, that was, that was a very nice event. That's it.
Okay. And preceding the holiday break, it seems every committee is advancing their meetings earlier, so we crammed in a lot in this last couple of weeks. Thank you, Jim, for attending the events on Friday and Saturday in my stead. I appreciate that. I did attend a Regional Planning Committee meeting last week, also the Administrative and Projects Committee of the Contra Costa Transportation Authority, getting the bills paid and, and managing some really amazing projects that we have going on. Also attended the mayor's conference holiday meeting in Martinez, and met several of the other mayors around the county, as most of us have done our rotations. I also attended the Clayton tree lighting. In fact, I lit the tree. Everybody else was down at the Clayton Community Church inside out of the rain, but I was in the rain, and I plugged them in. And we had several people that left the, the church and came down and took their Christmas pictures unobstructed in front of the tree. So, the rain did let up toward the end of it, but it was wonderful of Pastor Sean and the Clayton Community Church to volunteer to allow people to come in and muddy up their floors with their messy feet and all of that, and, and get the ceremony done, and the kids were able to sing inside where they didn't get soaked. So, that was a, a wonderful time for the, for the group. I think it's the first time we've actually been almost rained out. So, also attended a Transfect meeting at the six central county agencies that work together on regional transportation planning. Attended the East Bay Division of the League of California Cities, their holiday meeting in the city of Hayward, which was also very festive. Also had the Association of Bay Area Governments and Metropolitan Transportation Commission Joint Administrative and Planning Committee Meetings, talking about Plan Bay Area and where we are going from there. So, that was my last couple of weeks. The next report, I'd like to call Keith Hayden, who is our Central Contra Costa Transportation or Transit Authority, County Connection representative, for the end-of-the-year report, please.
Evening, Mayor, and council, and staff. I did present the mid-year report earlier this year, and I thought it would be helpful if the council heard an end-of-the-year report, just to be reminded of the good things that the County Connection is doing, and I have a particular focus on items of interest to Clayton. So, you may have noticed that the County Connection did implement some new service and fare changes this last year. They had not implemented any fare increases or changes in eight years, so it was, it was overdue based on increased expenses in the system. We were able to protect Route 10, which is the major route that goes up and down Clayton Road, serving Clayton, although they did extend the period between bus pickups. So, that was how they handled the reduced number of people based on the annual review, but they did also see that after they began to look at the impact of all the fares and service changes, actually, the ridership went up on the Clayton route from the Clayton locations. So, that was good news. And although they reduced the, or expanded the length between the pickups, and in effect is reducing the number of pickups, they introduced weekend service. And as you recall, earlier this year, the council was dealing with the issue on the impacts of parking for the Donna Creek entrance and Regency Gate, and thought that one solution may be to provide transit options. So, they did extend the Route 10 route up to the Diablo View Middle School and had it available on the weekends, Saturday and Sunday, which they had not done before. And they did see, for the three months in the summer that they monitored that, over 300 people used that bus service. So, that alleviated, hopefully, a little pressure on the neighbors and that neighborhood up there. The Clayton Library is by far the largest stop as far as number of passengers, and we have over 1,500 boardings between July and September at that stop alone, and then another 1,200 down at the Washington Boulevard Clayton Road bus stop as well. So, that was good news that we were able to generate some activity on extending that route into Clayton on the weekend. It gives also, beyond just the voking, the access to hiking areas, it also allows mass transit for our weekend events in Clayton, and our farmer's market, and the CBCA and city events that occur on Saturday and Sunday. And the service does go from 7:25 in the morning to 7:55 at night, so it also provides access for the summer concert series up until almost 8 o'clock. And then the fare structure, as I indicated when I spoke earlier, was also changed a bit. They increased fares for cash fares with the idea that they want to incent more and more usage of the Clipper Card, because it's much quicker for users to get on and off the buses if they are able to utilize the Clipper Card versus cash. And the drivers really appreciate that as well. It allows people to get onto the bus, reduces interactions requesting change and other questions about cash fares. So, that actually has been a very successful change, and they've seen about a 50, about a 72% increase in Clipper Card usage, which was the intent, but it exceeded even the expectation of the staff. So, that was really good. Also with the Clipper Card, they are including automatic discounts for adult, youth, and senior day passes, bus-to-bus transfers, BART-to-bus transfers, local and express trips, and all senior discounts. So, those are retained, and in some cases, expanded for the use of the Clipper Card. And they also allow the monthly passes for the Clipper Card. So, we did see a slight increase on the weekday traffic on Route 10, and then certainly an increase on the weekend, because that route had not been offered before. As far as the budget, it's quite an extensive budget, as you might imagine, running the entire fleet of over 70 buses. They did require quite a bit of funding, and the fiscal year, which runs from July until June, did approve a budget in this year, for this year, this fiscal year that we're in now, of $41.6 million. Now, luckily, 82% of that comes from local and state funds, the Contra Costa Transportation Authority, Measure J Sales Tax, State Transit Assistance and Transportation Development Act, with 13% coming from the fare revenues themselves, 3% from federal funds, and 2% from other revenue sources. So, only depending on the ridership providing 13% of the required expense coverage. The operating budget does support 220,000 revenue hours on the fixed route and 74,000 hours for paratransit services, which is a growing need of aging population in Contra Costa counties. So, we're trying to anticipate that, and a little bit later, I'll talk about what we're doing as far as looking at options to provide enhanced and more efficient services for that. But particular interest to the board was in regards to the pension. The County Connection is a CalPERS agency, but we did not enhance benefits in the early 2000s like many agencies, and we are still 91.5% funded, based on the last evaluation by CalPERS. So, similar to many agencies that are dealing with increased costs, in our budget, we were able to maintain that budget without serious fare increases to impact our users. So, as far as innovative things we're looking at this coming year, one thing I requested is there's no current bus that serves Clayton Valley Charter High School, and I'd like to encourage younger riders using the bus system so they get comfortable using it as they move into the business environment, as we certainly want to get more and more people off of our roads. So, as people become more comfortable using the buses, they're encouraged to use them for other opportunities, both for entertainment and for business. So, the system is looking at providing that additional route. We're also using electric buses. We have eight of them currently in service. They do require charging on every run or every other run. The batteries last between eight and 10 hours. So, we're looking at adding more buses, but really hoping that the efficiencies of the batteries and the recharging stations improve. And so, we're waiting for a little bit more improvement on that. Back to the trans, paratransit services, we're looking at three different options to provide better services for our aging population that qualifies for that. We have a six-month pilot going with a Uber and Lyft type of service, where the user calls for individual service, and is able to utilize that and then be reimbursed. And then a one-year pilot, where we'll actually pay a paratransit service to go and pick up the users that already qualified with the Disabilities Act Paratransit Eligibility through the County Connection system. And finally, we ended up switching providers to maintain our current linked paratransit to improve the service and efficiency of that service. So, we're able to maintain the expenses at the same level and yet expand the services. So, we're looking to enhance that service as well as these other two options. And finally, I want to recognize something that was, came, it came as a surprise to County Connection, and that was an award that they received from the Contra Costa Taxpayers Association. They were awarded, the County, the County Connection itself was awarded the Silver Award for Agency Services, and I'd like to read the actual verbiage from the award. County Connection maintains essential bus and paratransit service to central county residents at affordable cost. This is a serious challenge, as the vast majority of transit funding in the Bay Area is allotted to BART and MUNI, yet County Connection is often called upon to provide bridge service in the all-too-frequent event of BART failures. Salaries of management and compensation of represented workers are carefully controlled by the board and the general manager, whose salary is way below that of counterparts in the region and still very effective. So, again, that was an unexpected honor to receive that, and they did come and make a little presentation at one of our board meetings. So, it's been an active year, but I think we saw some real positive results, and I'll continue reporting things that impact particularly Clayton service. All right? Questions?
Any questions? Yeah, Tuya.
I have a couple of questions. So, you mentioned the possibility of having a route that would service between Clayton and Clayton Valley Charter High School.
Yes.
How does that come to fruition, and is there anything we as the city or the school could potentially do to make that happen, if that, in fact, is something that would be helpful?
Well, they're researching that now to see what that service would look like, what else it would link to, and the interest in the school in promoting that to their student bodies. So, it's just started, really. I just requested it at our last meeting, so the staff is beginning to look at that. But right now, it's not served at all by the county bus system, and I think that's something that should be addressed.
And I see the executive director is here as well, so maybe, maybe. So, if that would be helpful, that would be great to look into.
I think I can indicate that there's a great interest from the community.
Yeah. And then you mentioned that the buses take Clipper Cards. Is it the same Clipper Cards that work on BART?
Yes.
So, it works interchangeably?
Yes.
Okay. Perfect. Thanks.
Yes. Jeff?
So, you mentioned that the headways increased. What are the headways right now at both peak and non-peak times?
Well, they, you mean the bus stop areas?
Well, the, the time between...
Between...
They used to run between 15 and 30 minutes between stops, and now they're going to be running 30 to 60 minutes between stops. But even with that extended period, they saw the ridership go up.
Is that, the increase in ridership, is that gross, or is that per, per, per trip?
They were looking at the overall usage during a particular period of time and comparing it to previous comparable times.
Great.
Cool.
Thank you. And they're getting positive feedbacks from the passengers as well.
Sounds good.
Okay. Any other questions? If not, thank you very much, Keith. We appreciate that.
Okay.
Mayor, before you go on to public comments... I just wanted to give a shout-out. I think it was just oversight on part of the council, but there's another event that happened this past couple of weeks. December 14th was also Mrs. Claus and Mr. Claus at Endeavor Hall, and that was put on by our local Clayton Business and Community Association, really focused on the children to come in and have a free event, and have cookies, and hot cider, and, and the parents with some coffee. And Anthony Chippero, Brenda Seyfried, Gloria Utley, and Debbie Bruno, who was the co-chair of that, really put in a yeoman's effort, and the weather was actually delightful on that day, unlike the tree lighting. So, it was well-attended. I happened to have a chance to stop by, and everybody was enjoying themselves. There was a new Mrs. Claus and a new Mr. Claus this year, and they seemed to be very engaged with the, with the children that came in to visit.
Very good. Thank you. All right. The next item on our agenda is public comment, and this is the time for people in the audience to comment on items that are not listed on this evening's agenda. And we have several speaker cards here, but I'm going to start with our, our guests from the southern part of the state, and they are friends of and former colleagues of Ikani Tomapeo, and so they are here for what would have been his very first council meeting. So, Carlos Suarez, would you like to speak first, and we'll have John Proctor come out afterwards?
Well, good evening, Mayor Pierce, Vice Mayor Juan, and council members, and city staff of the city of Clayton. And especially a welcome and a thank you to Janet Calderon, who's kept myself and John Proctor informed the last few weeks of the events leading up to this meeting, and unfortunately, the events that have happened in the last 24 hours. First and foremost, I want to express my wife Heidi and I's deep sorrow for the loss of Ikani Tomapeo's mother. And also, the feelings come from several city staff members from the city of Santa Paula, and also council members and many friends that Ikani had. My name is Carlos Suarez, and I live at 1320 Fern Oaks Drive in the city of Santa Paula, which is directly in the middle of Ventura County. And I come here not beha, not on behalf of the city of Santa Paula City Council, but instead to fulfill a promise that I made to Ikani, and I'll tell you about that in a second. As a former police lieutenant, I just recently got elected to the city council and am currently serving as a vice mayor. I got to work with Ikani for the last two years, and when I first met him, as you know, police officers have to make split-second decisions on whether the people they encounter are dangerous, or, or trustable, or, you know, a threat, or, or they're approachable. And I knew right off the bat that Ikani was a type of person that wasn't a threat, even though he's very tall and, and, you know, overwhelming, but friendly and very trusting, and a very people person. And in all the years that I worked for Santa Paula, I've worked with a lot of city managers and assistant city managers, and I will tell you, it's been several city managers ago that I actually saw a city manager or assistant walking downtown and greeting people and talking, and, and this man knew a lot of people in Santa Paula, very friendly, very outgoing in the community. One day, we were on our way to a movie in the park, and I saw Mr. Tomapeo playing tennis with his daughters, and he saw that I was going to this movie, and he'd forgotten the movie was at night. And he said, "I should go." And I said, "No, no, you're with your family." But within about half an hour, he was at the park greeting people and videotaping, and then he would post it on our city's website. then he would post it on our city's website. He's the kind of person that any city would want to, want, any city would want you to work for. And I come here with a sense of sadness, but also with a sense of happiness, because we lost somebody who we really, really liked. But by the same token, you are joining or gaining somebody and opening him with open arms, and I don't think you'll be disappointed with Ikani. And, uh, tonight was supposed to be a surprise, and it still is because he knows we're here. So we're speaking, or I'm speaking, um, for Ikani, and just to let him know that I've supported him, and when I told him that someday, because of the qualities that he has and the personality that he exhibits, that he, there's no doubt that someday he would be a city manager. And I told him that when he is a city manager, I would travel to go see him, get, become the city manager. I didn't realize he would be five and a half hours away, but that's okay, because, uh, it was well worth it. So thank you for your time this evening, and we are going, hopefully, myself and former mayor John Proctor, we'll see him in the morning for breakfast. And it was, uh, uh, great visiting your city. Thank you.
Thank you so much. We appreciate your comments. John?
Yes, John Proctor, former mayor in Santa Paula, and, uh, I didn't get a chance to say goodbye to Ikani, and he's a very special dude. And I told him that this afternoon, and really sad, and would extend my condolences to him. But, um, I think I came here to give you some news, is that in terms of hiring Ikani, you made a big mistake in not hiring him sooner. Um, no, he's a guy that we'll really miss, and I wish I was talking to him directly. Someone whose integrity you know right away is, is just first-rate, and he's just a quality human being, and just like with Carlos, who, three minutes, Carlos, by the way, um, uh, that, that he, that he's, he's a quality human being, and, and that it is bittersweet. But we want to wish him well. He's one of those guys that we're just so glad to see him, you know, move on to something bigger and better. And, uh, I guess I'm at a loss of words. Carlos pretty much covered everything. Um, it's, but it's, it's great to visit you folks and see where he's going to be. Um, I'm sure you'll be glad, and, and learning something. It's fun to see how other councils operate. Um, you know, like the gentleman who gave the planning commission report, apparently there's some rule about drinking. And, uh, apparently, it hasn't filtered down to Santa Paula yet, so we'll, we'll see about that. But, but, um, once again, I'm going to, I'm going to stop speaking. It was important enough for me just to say, hopefully, I didn't get to say goodbye to him, but I will get to see him tomorrow morning, and congratulations.
Thank you so much for making the trip. We very much appreciate your, your kind words and your encouragement, and I know that Ikani will be pleased to see you.
All right, thank you.
It's not a real rule you can, they can partake if they want to.
They can, they just can't have a quorum gathered together, that's the problem.
We sit at separate tables.
Yeah, yeah. All right, thank you so much, and we do understand if you need to, to scoot out, but we, uh, we certainly appreciate your coming to the meeting and speaking, uh, directly to Ikani, and he will look at, if he's not already watching and streaming from wherever he is, which is like him, he will, um, certainly watch the meeting later and, and be able to hear your kind words directly.
And, uh, thank you for that, and I'm sorry, it came back up, but you did talk about streaming difficulties. We've had some growing pains with that, too. So if I said anything that sounded offensive, it's probably because of the streaming.
I'm sure that's not the case. All right, thank you very much for coming. Uh, our next speaker is Dan Hummer.
Good evening, uh, Mayor Pierce, council members, and city staff. My name is Dan Hummer, and I live in Stranahan Circle. As you know, there is a development trying to obtain approval called the Olivia Project for 81 units off of Marsh Creek and High Street. If the project is brought up to the city council, please keep the following in mind: The proposed development only has provisions for approximately 86 spaces for 81 units, and the developer is using the bonus density law to help facilitate the approval. I urge you to deny the project if the parking spaces are still limited to just one space for 81 units for the following reasons. First and foremost, safety. In the bonus density law, there is provision for local governments to require more parking for such a development. It is simply not reasonable to think that there will be only one car per unit, as many of the, uh, units are two-bedroom units, with the development still including age range of a working class, 55-plus. There will be people needing to get to work, and mass transit out here just takes too long to get into areas like Walnut Creek and Concord. With the potential, uh, resident count up to 224 residents in Olivia, there will be overflow parking at the parking, I'm sorry, well, there will, uh, there will be overflow parking. If the parking overflows into Stranahan, Easely, and Marsh Creek Road, this creates a major safety concern. Traffic on Marsh Creek moves way too fast for daily parking on this thoroughfare. People will logically park in Stranahan and/or Easely, and people will need to cross, cross Marsh Creek, and this creates a major safety concern. Uh, this alone should be enough to require reduced number of units and more parking spaces. Additionally, this will adversely affect parking availability inside of, uh, Stranahan, Easely residents, as well as the businesses downtown. It is safe to say that the residents of Stranahan and Easely would gain parking permit restrictions for their developments, which just forces the parking issue to downtown, and whom will be enforcing, and, and whom will be enforcing the parking permits in, in those, in those, uh, developments. I believe that the last, uh, project that was proposed was, uh, only 44 units. Um, this looked like to be a, um, a viable project, so I'm not sure why the developer is looking to have 81 units and saying that it has to be 81 units in order to make it viable, when, uh, two prior projects were proposed with much greatly reduced quantities. Um, secondly, uh, housing prices. If this development passes as proposed, parking at, at, and the heights of the buildings will adversely affect the housing prices of the surrounding neighborhoods. This is simply unfair to the, these, uh, established communities and leads ways to per potential lawsuits for these existing residents. In summary, we have to, uh, use good judgment regarding this proposal and thoughtful of the existing communities already in place. The amount of units and the parking spaces need to be adequately, um, planned. Safety of the residents and public should be of high concern, so let's do the right thing and plan accordingly. Before approving, please have the number of units reduced and the parking spaces increased. Uh, you, as the local government, still have the authority under the bonus density law if the developer truly passes the requirements for the bonus density increase, as noted. Um, sorry, my wording's bad, but basically, let's not have it pass as is. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments, Dan. Allison Snow?
Well, good evening. I'm Allison Snow. I live in Eagle Peak, and Dan, thanks for teeing up the conversation, because my topic is the same. Um, the planning commission did an excellent job of, um, dealing with a very controversial project. There were, the, this room was full both evenings, and the planning commission did a terrific job listening to everyone, even though it did go through, through past midnight. Um, I am very concerned about this project. The parking is simply one of many. If we think about the number of people that are probably going to reside in these two-bedroom apartments, it's somewhere on the order of 244 residents in those apartments. And this is a senior development project. That concerns me because there's no demand. The Diamond Terrace project has two people on the waitlist for the non-low-income housing apartments and eight for the low-income housing. So there's no demand for this. Further, because they are not providing enough parking spaces, Jordan seems to think handing out bus passes is going to help, are going to help the residents, when Diamond Terrace has a shuttle bus. He's not even offered to provide a shuttle bus for what we call the fragile elderly, 85 and above, for them to get back and forth to Safeway. So there really isn't any accommodation for that. Very concerned about that. Further, we found out when the city of Clayton had been proposed, uh, the project for the Mental Health Mancha Center, our fire department doesn't have a three-story ladder on our, on our hook and ladders. So if there was a fire, how would they be able to help someone if they don't have a third story that, uh, reach for a third story? That's extremely important, not to mention the fact that I am very concerned about Clayton having only two roads to come out toward Concord. We are developing our city into something that's as risky as the campfire in paradise. And that really terrifies me for the people in Dana Hills and Stranahan, um, and anybody that would try to come off of down Morgan Territory Road if, for example, they couldn't head out toward Brentwood. Um, we, we really have a lot of issues that I hope you all will spend a lot of thoughtful time on. Yes, they pass as far as some technicalities concerned, but by far and above, Clayton and its residents are against this project. And I have a signature page of 550 people who have signed stating they are against this project. So please be very, very thoughtful about the current residents of Clayton's notions about what might happen if you do allow this project. Thank you.
Thank you, Allison. The next speaker is Irina Luskovich.
Well, good evening. Uh, Irina Luskovich, I live in Stranahan Circle, and I've been on both planning, you know, meetings on the planning commission, and it was huge participation, that basically there was almost standing room here. The same as Dan said, it is a safety issue. We have lots of children on Stranahan Circle, small children. They play. 250 cars on that street trying to get out is not going to help. This is opening the city to the lawsuit, and it's absolutely 100% hazard and safety problem if we try to get out of Stranahan. We lived in Stranahan since 1998, and we know how many fires we already survived, thank God, but we were able to get out of there. Now, if we have all these cars crossing Marsh Creek, Stranahan has one way out, one way out. And there is no roads out of Clayton to go anywhere but to the right from Stranahan to Concord, to the left, trying to get to Brentwood. But if there is a fire on Morgan Territories, and there is, it's not, it's not an option. We are talking about a very serious danger. 24/7, we've been hearing about the fires in California that is a new normal. If it's a new normal, we live next to Mont Diablo, our back is against the wall, we have no access to anything. We're not Walnut Creek. We cannot get on Highway 680 on 24, no we can't. We have to get out of Clayton first, and Stranahan is a very, a very hazardous place to do, you know, try to get out in a panic. And I can't even contemplate what is going to happen when people try to get to leave Stranahan, because all these cars from Olivia will be parked on Stranahan, and people from Olivia will try to get out. So it is absolutely unrealistic to think that 81 units will have 81 people. It's absolute, it's absurd. Everybody knows it. There was not a single person in this room who thought it was true. It could be a married couple. 55 is not really senior. Uh, Social Security Administration pushes us to 67 now to get the Social Security check. So 55, we're 55, we'll work, and we will be working for another 10 years. So that senior citizen, uh, it's a fig leaf. I'm sorry, it is a fig leaf. And the most biggest concern, what happens if his investors pull out? What's going to happen to the city of Clayton?
Thank you, Irina. And our, hold on, get this. Um, our next speaker is Jim Scheible. And congratulations. Wow, good job.
All right, good news is I didn't come here to ask for anything. I actually came here to do some congratulations and thank yous, and, uh, it's the season of giving, so I've brought some gifts for all of you, hopefully. Um, so first off, congrats, uh, Mayor Pierce on serving another term as mayor, and Vice Mayor Juan as well for your new term, and congratulations to you, Mayor, uh, well, council member, cut along, I guess, uh, for serving your term. Um, I also want to thank the whole council. Um, as you know, you supported Clayton Valley Charter High School in our renewal efforts. The school was renewed last week on a 3-2 vote, and so, uh, that's five more years of continuing to serve kids in the community of Clayton at Clayton Valley Charter High School. Um, I did during that time, during this time, talk to, uh, Mr. Hayden about the transportation, so hopefully we can work that out. Um, another celebratory note, so as you know, Clayton Valley, uh, continued to advance in the football playoffs. It's one of those seasons that never seems to end. Um, I believe it started in August, and so this Friday will be the first Friday I don't have to wear a red shirt on campus, so I'm not sure what I'm going to wear, um, but we'll see. Um, I did go down to Los Angeles for the state championship game that Clayton Valley made. I actually took public transit from, uh, LAX to the stadium. It was $5, and it was 10 minutes slower supposedly than a car, but if you've been to LAX and enjoyed the Uber/Lyft line, I believe I made it faster. And then on the way back, it was only $1.75, because I didn't have to buy that little metro pass card. Uh, but what the kids did for all of you and for your city manager who's not here, so I'll give it to Ms. Hoffmeister, who already has one of these. So if you see two of them in her office, you know someone didn't get one.
Uh-oh.
Um, but our kids, uh, they went around, they were able to sign some footballs.
Ooh.
And so you guys all get one of these. Um, it is under the reportable value, I believe, it was, how?
Less than $25.
It is over the reportable value, uh, because this is $44.99. I thought it was 50.
It is 50.
Yeah, so, so it's un, so it's under the reportable value, let the record show, whoever's watching this and listening to it, uh, it was $44.99 for each of these footballs. So we just want to give one to each of you. Again, thank you for your support. Um, I believe there might be a little celebration in January for the kids down in the Grove, so we're hoping folks can make it. Um, I think we're working that out. It was a little bit hard with finals this week to do something this week, but hopefully you can make it out. And again, the kids did a great job, so we, we just wanted to share in that celebration with you all. So thank you again.
That's awesome. Thank you so much.
Are you going to give this to?
I have it. My other one's in that other office.
All right.
And Jim, be sure to tell her, because we just are so proud of them, and we are so glad that the charter was renewed. Thank you very much.
My neighbor's on the team, and he traveled down, so I was very pleased to see that. Thank you.
And then can I give this to you for Mr. Wolf?
Absolutely, thank you very much.
And then just last, I hope my time, well, my time might have cut off, but, um...
You're a kid.
I know you might not have offices, but I'm, feel like some city staff and maybe police wouldn't, would be happy to host your football in their office if you don't have a city office, but if you want to take it to your house, it's yours, you can do what you want with it. So thank you again, I appreciate your time, and, um, we'll see you later. Thank you.
Go ugly. Pretty awesome, pretty awesome. Thank you, Jim. And our final speaker this evening is Basam Al-Wal.
Good evening, Mayor, councils, staff. My name is Basam Al-Wal. I live in Il Molino, um, of Regency. I'm on the planning commission, and I just, uh, wanted to encourage you to recognize one of your soldiers on the assistant plan at Milan Sikla. Uh, the last month, we had two extremely long meetings, and the amount of paperwork and documents that we had to go through was unbelievable, even in my career as, as an architect, that I go through this all the time. Um, but what, what's, what Milan did understaffed, couple of times, at least couple of times, stayed up to 4:30 in the morning. One of them was on a Friday night to finish the paperwork, because he has by rules to get it to us before 72 hours. And he stayed, and I know that because he texted us, or he emailed us at 4:30 in the morning. And at one night, I thought the packages were ready, I went there at 10 o'clock at night to pick up my package, and the lights were up there, and he was working, I saw his car outside. So I just thought that I, um, I need to come down here and, and let you know about his efforts, uh, because he is the soldier's beholder, he just, he just, the person who actually most likely did, did most of the work other than, uh, David, so, uh, I just want to let you know about, about my personal feeling about his efforts, and want you, if possible, to somehow recognize him. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much, Basam. Yes, he was, he was a real soldier on that one. We saw the lights on at City Hall many, many evenings, getting ready for that meeting, so, and I'm sure there will be more. So thank you very much. I don't have any other speaker cards. Was there anyone else who wished to speak under public comment? All right, hearing none, um, we will close public comment. We have no public hearings this evening. We have two items on our agenda for action. The first one is the approval of a consulting agreement with TRC Solutions to provide contract planning services, including staffing, uh, the community development director position on an interim basis until we can get a permanent position filled. Do we have a staff report?
Well, thank you, Mayor. Uh, that's pretty much the staff report, but I did want to recognize that Dana Ayers, who would be the principal that would be staffing the position on an interim basis, is here with us this evening, so I'd like her to stand.
Laura, I don't think your mic is on.
Oh, my microphone's not on. Thank you, Mayor. Uh, yes, following...
Up to the agenda title, that is exactly what staff's asking of you this evening, but I did want to recognize Dana Ayers, who will be the principal from the firm that will be, uh, working in the city of Clayton, um, for the interim period.
Wonderful.
And she's here this evening.
Thank you for coming, and I did have a conversation with our interim city manager, who called me this afternoon to sing the praises of, of our contract here, and recommended highly that we approve it. So he has worked with her many times before and feels that this would be a very good solution for our interim city planner position while we go ahead and recruit again and let Ikani choose someone for a permanent position. So are there any questions of staff or of the applicant? Tuya?
I have a question. So, I mean, we, we already had a recruitment out, I think, I think it was in last summer, early fall, and I think it didn't produce quite enough candidates or successful candidates, but, so is our, what's our recruitment effort at this point?
We just started again with the Community Development Director and the Finance Manager. The city clerk has put out the brochure on that and posted up to our website and is reaching out to other media outlets that we use for advertising. The cutoff date, I believe, is January 25th?
Actually.
No, you changed it.
The item.
The recruitment is, is actually open until filled, and both positions will have a first review on Saturday, January 25th, 2020.
Okay. Any other questions? Go ahead, Jeff.
Good, good luck.
Yes. Okay, Jim, any questions? No. Okay. Very good. Well, anyone have a motion for this? Or Ms. Ayers, would you like to say anything? You come very highly recommended. You don't have to speak if you don't want to.
I'll just say a few words. Thank you. I hope to be of great assistance to this community for a brief period of time. Ultimately, you do want a permanent position. I'm here representing TRC. Brenda Peters, who is the California Practice Lead, is not well today, so I'm sure she would have been here as well. But I will be the face you see the most, but there will be other staff from TRC that will also be available to provide services. And again, thank you and hope this is a short visit.
Well, thank you for stepping up to help us out. We, we really appreciate that. Thank you. Okay. I'm waiting for a motion.
I'll make a motion to, let me see what the motion is for, to, to approve the consulting agreement with TRC Solutions to provide contract planning services, including staffing the Community Development Director position.
Second.
I have a motion and a second to approve the contract. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Oppose? That carries unanimously. Thank you very much. The next item on the agenda is the review and approval of the mayoral determination, city council, ad hoc committee, et cetera, assignments for 2020. I apologize that you did not get this in advance. It turns out that my city email has been seriously hacked, and that address will be, I hope, discontinued altogether, because I'm not sure it's reparable. But I, I was sending out emails and not, didn't know until today that they weren't going anywhere, because I was receiving them, but I could not send unless you got one of the hacked emails. That's probably because you were on my address list, so I apologize. But it's being worked on, our IT staff is working on that now.
Hopefully you didn't purchase the timeshare.
I'm hoping not. Most of what got sent out was invoices for the city of Clayton to submit $10,014 in payment for services for something I couldn't figure out, but someone was trying to drum up money. And then I got responses back, interestingly enough, from each of you when I told you not to respond, I got a response back that said it was from Reykjavik. And so I thought, uh oh, we may have a bigger problem. So that's your notice that everybody needs to be looked at. So, including city staff, responded with that same template response. So I'm, I'm feeling unsure right now. So don't open anything that you don't have to. So before you is the list of assignments, and let's just go through this, because I, I would like your concurrence on these, and I can give you kind of my rationale. The first one is the Association of Bay Area Governments. I am proposing to keep that, since I am the immediate past president and serve on many of the committees, as well as on several of the joint committees with the Metropolitan Transportation Commission. Right now, we have Tuya Catalano as my alternate, primarily because Tuya works in San Francisco and then is convenient to the location where all these meetings are held if somebody needs to cover for me. Is that okay with everyone?
Congratulations.
To continue with that? Okay. The Budget Audit Committee. I'd like to propose we do that a little differently this year. We've all talked about wanting a multi-year budget. We've talked about some of the things we'd like to do and going through it with Ikani. I think it would be good to have a committee of the whole, so that we can actually have notice meetings, like many people, many other agencies do, and go through the budget together as a working day. It may take a separate meeting to do that, but I know almost all of our colleagues on other councils set aside a special workshop day or something like that to review the budget. And I think that would be helpful with the new city manager on board. And that would allow the public to attend and hear the details as well. So has anybody got an objection to that?
Would, would that encompass both the annual budget, as well as the mid-year and the planning sessions as well? So you're talking like two to three-ish meetings?
Perhaps, perhaps. It certainly would be for the full budget.
What Vice Mayor's indicated, that's what we'd take to the subcommittee.
Exactly.
And then also, I think, there was another meeting that our interim finance director has suggested about a discussion around existing internal controls, so it would take the place of that as well.
I think that would be, well, I think it would be included there, too. I think that would be the kind of decisions that would be good for the entire council to have participation in, so that we all know what those concerns are and how we plan to address them.
What we would do, Vice Mayor and Council, is to do like we done with the budget subcommittee, but this time it would be for five council members. It would be noticed as a public meeting, so it would be more of a, an interactive discussion and, and work group. You'd still be able to take public comment.
Right.
And then after conclusion of that workshop, so to speak, or that committee meeting, we would then reschedule the item for a full council meetings for you to take formal action, if there's one necessary, like mid-year budget review and your adopted budget processes.
So it would be like a study session?
So you'd get two, two times that you would be reviewing, all of you, as, as a full council, the materials.
I think that's an excellent idea, given that, like you said, we've all talked a little bit about having a five-year plan or a more long-term plan, and then also given the fact that we're kind of in an interim position with city manager and finance manager. So I, I think that's.
And if that includes internal controls and some additional suggestions that we can get from new staff members, I think that's a really good idea.
Yeah, that sounds good. I think it also includes the, receiving the report of the Audit Committee on an annual basis as well, so.
Sure.
Yeah.
It, it probably adds a bit to the workload of those who are not on the subcommittee, but I don't think that's a bad thing for the rest of us to be able to hear your very wise questions, because that's your specialty. It's not mine. And what I can learn from others, I think, is good for all of us and for the community to be able to really get a good, close look at what the budget's all about as it's being put together. Okay? So with your concurrence, we will move that to be a committee of the whole. And leaving the cert designations, the Citizens Corps Council with Jim and Jeff. The Finance Authority is dictated under our bylaws. The Community Park, Sports Fields, Ad Hoc Committee, we don't have to do much on that, and Tuya and I have been on that, and I'm proposing just to leave that alone for now. The Contra Costa Water District Liaison, Jim, you've been doing an excellent job of that, so I was planning to leave you there with Carl CW as the alternate. As you heard tonight, Keith has been doing a really good job on the County Connection Board. He has just been elected as vice chair, so I am proposing that we leave him as the delegate and ask Jim to be the alternate, if you're okay with that, Jim? You're okay with that?
Yes.
Thank you. The Do the Right Thing, Tuya and CW are doing a great job on that, so let's let them do that heavy lifting. The Downtown Activities Committee hasn't done a whole lot, but Jim and I are there at most of the activities and working hard on them, so I think it makes sense to leave that one alone. The East Bay Division has been one that I've been covering for the last year or so, and I would prefer not to do that. There may be an occasional meeting that I'd like to go to, as any of us can, but Jim, I'd like to ask you to take the lead on that. You've served there before, you know most of the folks, it's Alameda and Contra Costa elected officials. Both you and Tuya are very active in the league, so I'd like in league policy committee, so it makes sense for me to have Jim be the delegate and Tuya be the alternate. And again, all of us can attend anytime we want for those informational meetings. The East County Habitat Conservancy, Tuya's been doing that and expressed interest in retaining that. CW is also very interested in that subject, so I thought we'd leave him as the alternate for that. Economic Development Committee, I don't know what we're doing there, but I suspect maybe Ikani will have some ideas on what we might be able to do. He, he indicated as much when, when we interviewed him, so I thought I'd leave that as CW and me, and Jeff, you as the alternate, for whichever one of us might not be able to make a particular meeting. The Endeavor Hall Marketing Committee, CW expressed interest in that. Jim, you've been on that before, I think that's good to leave you there. Garbage and Recycling is going to have quite a bit coming up this year, and I was thinking of leaving that one as, as Jim and Tuya, but Jeff, you had expressed an interest at one point in some of that as well. We're gonna have rate reviews and, and probably contract negotiations, that sort of thing, so I think it makes some sense to leave that as Jim and Tuya, and maybe add you as an alternate, if you're okay with that?
Yep.
And then the interviews for committees for Planning Commission applicants, that's the full city council as usual, and for the TLC, that would be you, Jeff, as the vice mayor and the delegate, and with Tuya serving with you on that committee to interview applicants for the TLC. The Library Foundation Liaison, CW asked to let someone else rotate into that position, so I'm asking maybe my vice mayor would cover that.
Sounds good.
And I know that Tuya and I'd be happy to back you up anytime if you can't make it. I, I know with kids' schedules, it's hard sometimes for evening meetings, but it, it's, it's not a hard duty, but, you know, it's, it's fun to do. The Mayor's Conference is all of us. The Mount Diablo School District Liaison Committee, Jeff and Tuya are the ones that have children in Mount Diablo Unified School District, so it makes sense for you to be the direct committee, and then I would serve as your alternate. The Jihad is dictated by our bylaws. That's Jeff as chair and Jim as vice chair. We elected that last time. Trails and Landscaping Committee, Jeff, you are the delegate there. We're leaving the alternate as Tuya. Transpac, I am serving there, and I am suggesting we make CW the alternate for that, get him involved a little bit in learning about that program. And then the Unsung Heroes Program is Tuya and CW. Does anyone have objections to, or would like other positions instead?
Looks pretty good.
Everybody okay with that? We need a motion on that, Laura.
Yes, you do have this as an action. Yes. Yes, you do have this as an action.
Okay. Okay, very good. So I would entertain a motion.
I'll make a motion to approve the mayor's suggested committee assignments.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Oppose? That carries unanimously. Thank you. We are on to item nine, which is limited to council requests and directives for future meetings. Any special requests for future meetings?
I have one. I'm not, I'm not actually sure if this is the right, if this is the appropriate section to raise it, but as, at the suggestion of our city attorney, I think I'd like to, the decision of the, the recent decisions of our Planning Commission are such important that I think it should be reviewed by the city council. So I, I don't know if this is the appropriate time to raise that as a future item, or is that something that we talk about now? I know it takes a, it takes a vote, so we probably can't do that now.
Well, let's, let's let our city attorney advise us of the process, and that may be taken out of your hands automatically.
Yes, that would have to be agendized for a future meeting. There is a window to hold the, to make a request for the appeal. A notice of determination has to be issued by our interim Community Development Director. He has until this Friday to do so. Once he issues the notice of determination, it says the appeal process, which is 10 days. And so then the council could consider during that 10 days, holding a special meeting in which then to consider whether you would like to appeal the decision of the Planning Commission.
Can I ask a clarifying question?
Sure.
Go right ahead, because I'll, I'll ask it if you don't. Go ahead.
So if the notice, sorry, the, the filing of the determination is by this week, and then the appeal needs to be done within 10 days? Trying to do my math on the count here. I'm not sure if our next meeting is within 10 days.
No, it will not be, which is why I mentioned you would have to hold a special meeting.
So if the, if you notice the determination has a certain time period, as well as the appeal has a certain time period, is it required that it's a special meeting that this action needs to be taken?
If you.
Because we, because it require, if my understanding is correct, we need a, a four-fifths vote?
Right. You couldn't, you couldn't take action tonight, and then your next meeting would be outside of that 10-day period to request an appeal. So, so yes, you would need to hold a special meeting to consider requesting the appeal, because otherwise, if you waited until your January meeting, it would exceed the timeframe for an appeal.
Let me follow up on that just a second, because my understanding of the 2-2 vote at the Planning Commission was a non-decision. So if the developer or anyone else wanted to appeal the non-decision to get a definitive decision, one way or the other, they would likely appeal.
Correct.
That non-decision to the council, and that would then be brought up at a future council meeting.
That is correct.
And just so I can let you know, we have had inquiries from the public regarding the appeal process, so it may be likely that somebody might be filing an appeal within the timeframe after the notice of decision. They know that they have to wait for the notice of decision, and we will know more about that timing when Mr. Wolf rings in the office tomorrow.
But, but I would say that if you're looking at a council action to bring it to the council, I think you're then looking at wanting to approve the project effective, because right now it's in no decision, so it's in a denial status. And the developer hasn't exhausted their administrative remedies unless they appeal the decision to the council, so I would suggest that there's probably a strong likelihood that the applicant will appeal that themselves, and we will hear it without you having to take action to want to approve it.
Yeah, I think.
Either the developer or a member of the public, or both. I won't be surprised if both appeal.
I'm, I'm not talking about Planning Commission Resolution 0619. I'm talking about Resolution 0519, which I believe, according to Commissioner Gavida's report, passed 3 to 1. That's the, that's the resolution that I'm describing. So I'm not sure how that happens, whether or not we need to call a special meeting to do that, or, I mean, given the public interest, I think it is likely that someone will appeal, and my understanding is that the appealing, the appeal fee, the file, oh, sorry, the processing fee is somewhere north of $300.
$345.
And given that, given that this is a matter of such importance that should be reviewed by the council, I think we could obviate the need for that fee from the public and take it up on appeal for Resolution 0519. That's, that's my suggestion. And I'm not sure how to effect. And I'm not sure how to effect that action.
You'd have to call us, but I think a majority of you would need to request that we call a special meeting.
So we can't do that now because we can't take action?
You can't take action for two reasons. It's not on your agenda, and the timeframe has not occurred in which to appeal the decision.
So if you think about, if you think about the challenge here is that we can't take action because it's not on the agenda. However, we won't have a meeting to take action collectively
Before the appeal period.
Within the time period, so that seems bad. So I'm not sure how we could alleviate that, aside from who can initiate a special meeting.
You can initiate a special meeting. So I think you would have to decide as a majority if you wanted to call a special meeting to discuss this issue.
So basically, what we're talking about is
Can we do that right now?
Either just before Christmas or between Christmas and New Year's, we would have to schedule a special meeting.
Correct.
Because New Year's would be the 10-day, or New Year's Eve would be the 10-day end of the appeal period.
Who wants to meet on Christmas Eve?
Not me.
And can you, city attorney, can you clarify so any member of the public can appeal the decision, so you do not have to have testified or anything like that?
Correct. Any member of the public can appeal.
And so I guess my suggestion is that because any member can initiate that appeal and because the decision is of such importance that we, if we take it up, we obviate the need for a member of the public to pay the $343. So that's my motivation. And I'd like to do that, but I don't know how I can make that happen because we won't have a meeting to make it happen within the time period, and we can't take action now. So I feel like, I'd like to call a special meeting, but I don't think I have the ability to do that, so I'm not sure how that actually happens. Can I do that right now?
I think you just need a majority of you to agree to call this special meeting.
And can we do that if it's not on the agenda?
It would be that you're directing us to take a future, just like on this agenda, you direct us to place future items on, at future meetings, you'd be directing us to place an appeal process at a future meeting that would occur before the appeal timeframe. So that's, that is, I think, what you're requesting, Vice Mayor, and the question is, is that the pleasure of the council?
Yes.
So for scheduling purposes, if I look at the calendar, and I think the public is going to object to any date we choose during that week, but unless we were to choose Monday night...
Well, this isn't necessarily as a matter of discussion, it's just a question of whether or not we should do it.
No, no, no. I'm trying to say whether we're going to call a special meeting. We have to make sure we can get a quorum.
True.
And I'm not sure if people are even going to be in town.
It requires a four-fifths vote, if I recall, so it's not even just a quorum.
So we need more than a quorum to vote...
You need at least four of you there, and then if it's four of you, you would need a unanimous vote.
Right. So if the appeal period doesn't open until Friday, the 20th...
Do we know that? Is that...
It'll, I think, if I can add, I've been dealing with this quite a bit. If Mr. Waltering issues it on Friday, which is the latest he can issue, then it'll start the 10-day period.
Is it 10 calendar days or 10 working days?
I believe it's 10 calendar days. The one question we have to deal with and work through is that two of those days will be the 24th and the 25th, so we might extend an additional two days to the date. But it'll be, you know, it'll be no later than, I think, that January 2nd.
And I am out of town from the 26th through the 1st.
Okay, so that leaves about the 23rd as the only date.
And, yeah, I mean, I...
Doesn't it?
Or the 24th, I guess, but...
I'm not meeting on Christmas Eve.
And really, the only reason is because, you know, I do think it is a matter of, it is a matter of importance, and so if we expect to have an appeal from a member of, from an interested party, then I don't see a need to bill them $343 if we're going to take it up anyways.
And you're talking specifically about the SEQA appeal, which is...
0519, yes.
Which is, so what you're asking us to look at is our city staff issued an exemption, and you're asking to second-guess whether the city correctly issued a SEQA exemption?
I think, let's not talk about the merits of the appeal. I think we have been talking quite a bit already, so maybe I would encourage you to decide if you want to even schedule a special meeting to talk about the merits. And the merits will be limited.
It's only whether or not to take up the appeal.
Exactly. It's not to talk about the project itself because we want to make sure that we comply with due process.
Right. And any member of the public can appeal
Correct.
that, and I think, Jeff, what you're saying is, is the fee mandatory?
Yeah, if the fee's not mandatory, then...
The fee is mandatory unless the council brings the appeal.
I'm open to it. If we're unable to do it from scheduling, then I believe that there will probably be members of the public that will be interested in doing that. But given that it is, as you suggest, a matter of importance that should be reviewed by the council, then...
I didn't suggest that. I just wanted to be clear.
I'm just lifting your language.
I know. I just want to be clear, that's not my suggestion. It's that if the council so wants to appeal it, that that would be a potential grounds to do so.
Sure.
Got it.
Verbatim, lifting your language.
I think it's really difficult for the council to take an action on an item that we have not reviewed as a body, to appeal a decision that we were not involved in making. I think, you know, we're supposed to stay unbiased. For us to be unbiased and yet appeal a decision that was made that is final at the Planning Commission level without being automatically referred to us, I think that's a conflict for us. I don't think we really have standing to do that.
Our Clayton Municipal Code... I want to concur in that because I have purposely avoided viewing the Planning Commission meetings on, even though I tried the last time and failed miserably between Channel One and Channel Two, which I think our assistant city manager knows what that's about. So I agree, and I'm trying to stay unbiased, and you're trying to force me to be biased, and I'm...
Well, no, I think that being unbiased is great, and that's as we should be. However, the Clayton Municipal Code contemplates an appeal by council, so the idea that doing an appeal by council is a biased action, I think that's unfounded since it's within the rationale of the code itself that contemplates that action. So taking the action that is already within, that's provided within the code, is completely appropriate, given that that's the way that we've codified the appropriate, the available actions. Whether or not we do it or not is a separate question, but the choice of whether or not to do it is not in itself something that is precluded because, well, it's stipulated that that's an available action.
So maybe I could encourage you, since it's not on the agenda and we've been having quite a bit of dialogue, to, if there is a desire to call a special meeting or not.
Well, I guess the other question is, are people in town even on the one day that would be available?
The 23rd?
23rd, as far as I'm concerned, the only day that would be available to have that meeting.
And I'm not available that day. That's a family event that I care not to discuss in public right now.
Well, I'm available on the 23rd.
I'm in town, but I think we need to know if there's at least four of us here because then there's no purpose in having...
Well, there's definitely one that is not, and so the other...
And I thought I heard CW say he was going to be out of town, so...
That would be lack of available quorum.
Yeah.
And then you're not on the 24th, it's Christmas Eve, it's kind of tough.
I'm leaving on the 24th.
Yeah, and then I'm out from the, I'm out after that, so, and then our 10-day period.
I think I would suggest that we leave it to a member of the public, and a member of the public could be an individual city council member if they wanted to appeal and pay the fee.
Do we have leave to extend the 10 days? You said that you could extend it past, given the holiday?
I think we'll deal with that. I'd rather the council not get involved in that, and staff will administratively work on that, and we'll make that information public.
Given that a couple of the days are regular holidays.
Exactly. Just given that we have at least two days or holidays that we may extend by two additional days. But we will make that information public.
So can I ask one other question? So I know some cities have, when filing of a fee to appeal is an economic hardship, that they do waive it, but we don't have any kind of provision like that.
I don't believe we do. I will double-check that, but I don't believe we do.
And just by way of information, do we know what format that needs to take from a member of the public?
It is in our municipal code.
It just says a notice in writing.
Yeah, it's a notice in writing.
Could it be like, can you write it on like a napkin?
I don't, I don't know that we would care if it was, we do have an application, but I don't think we're limited to just that application form.
Okay.
It could be a simple, couldn't it be submitted by email? No, it has to have the payment.
Well, it has to have the fee.
Has to have the fee.
So if it's in email, the fee needs to be also submitted timely.
Yeah. Okay. Yeah, public comment, go ahead, come to the mic, please.
And then maybe I can encourage, again, this is not on the agenda.
We're not going to discuss any further, yeah.
And I think we've gotten a bit far.
Yeah.
Hi, I just wanted to check. You had indicated you'll make it publicly accessible. Where would that be specifically to make sure that that's, because there's actually a lot of links on the city website, so we don't want to have it buried somewhere where we're looking around and a lot of the public can't find it. Is there going to be a logical spot for it in the city council?
I think we're going to try to put it on the homepage to make it as accessible as possible, and we are going to attempt to notify people who have spoken or shown interest
Okay, appreciate that, thank you.
To the extent that we have your information.
All right, thanks.
So that's where we are on that. Any other items for future agendas? Hearing none. We have no closed sessions, and as I mentioned earlier, I would like to adjourn our meeting this evening in honor of Fisi Pao, Tama Pao. This is our new city manager's mother, who unfortunately had a stroke the day after he arrived in Clayton and passed away late last night. The good thing is his entire family from all over the country was there with her for several hours last night. And so we will adjourn tonight in her honor. Thank you very much. And...